That's the latest by the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Here.
All in favor of Dennis O'Bay?
Here.
All in favor of Laura Dieter?
Here.
All in favor of Diane Smith?
Okay, approval of the agenda.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public forum, everybody signed up for that consented agenda?
I'm going to make a motion for the consented agenda. How's that going to do?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
It was suggested at the last meeting that we have a Sunshine Mall training request. David contacted them and we got a message that they will be in St. John County at the VFW Mall.
I got the date because the date is accurate, I came later. So VFW Mall, it's going to be April 21st at 6:30 PM. And that's the VFW Mall here in St. John.
We what then?
Uh, 6:30 PM.
The VFW, you said?
Yes.
Yeah, but that's the service that you're going to give it yet?
That's the year of the month.
Yeah.
Okay, so that time of year for the employees' bonuses?
Well, I mean, it's 2.5 days of employees' gross pay and that's been set by the employee manual. It says that we have not increased time that we convert it for any amount of year. Only one employee can increase their time along with a few hours. Also includes $25 wall marketing card. That's what we do each and every year.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the year-end bonus.
Okay, do you want to have a second?
Okay.
I have a private House discussion. I would like everyone to discuss. That this is, that all of you guys who would have to abstain because this involves some...
No, no, no. I want a little harder note. I don't know what you're saying, but all I do is make a second on the vote.
Okay.
When you guys vote, okay?
Okay.
Is that... So you want to second that thing or you second?
We seconded and he's going to answer all.
Do you want to go on? I think I probably should. All right, all in favor of Dennis O'Bay?
Aye.
All in favor of Laura Dieter?
Aye.
All in favor of Diane Smith?
Nay.
Okay, the next thing is the health insurance increase. The previous amount was $664.32. And it's going to go up and it's going to be $816.98.
Is it per person?
That's for one person.
For one person.
Correct.
This is not the insurance that me and the city workers have. This is the insurance, the chief Beckett's policy. Our insurance in the city, when we voted on that, that was a dollar six over last year.
Oh, don't even, ours and yours are a little bit higher. This is going up $152.
Correct.
I'm sorry, it's eight hundred and something.
Why, why, it's, why were we paying?
We were paying $664.32.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
Can I say that stuff?
Sure.
I don't see how we support this. In fact, we paid all those burglar charges, insurance costs, pitch one amount. His is always in harm. I don't know why that happened. He's got a different.
He has his wife on it, Clyde.
Well, then he had a different policy also. He's got Blue Cross Blue Shield Alliance. He's just sending a employee to my table.
I thought you said that it was one person.
I said that, I'm sorry.
Well, when we say one person, we mean one individual's policy.
Family, immigrant, wife.
Correct, correct. Person does things.
Sorry.
That's okay, I just wanted to understand.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You were talking about the insurance.
Okay. I don't know why he has a different insurance. And we have no idea why it was called just for him. It's never been shown to us. We don't know why. You know what I'm saying, he had a policy of his own. I don't know what his own is. We never sent these papers out anywhere. We just take what he wants. We have to take his word for it, which I'm not saying by him, but he's not right. While we offer one city employee, they should all take their same insurance. Now, our insurance went up $1, you know, all day.
A dollar seven.
Now, we're at $150 something dollars. No, we're not going to do that. And the issue is still, I think we have to say our insurance. We know all of the value is on the threshold of the policy. That's my recommendation.
Dennis?
Me and the city court panel on this today because I discussed with them. We went over the ordinance that regulates the police department. And it states in there that he has to, he's not, one states that he's not liable for the employee benefits that's in our benefit package and the other one says that he has to be on the same insurance policy as the rest of everybody else, okay? So, I agree with Clyde. I think that he would have to carry the insurance that we carry for all city employees. And he's not a special case. Now, in the past, okay? And I hate bringing up the past, but the past, we were always told that it was in his contract that we cover his wife for the police department. But in nowhere, in no writing anywhere can we find that, okay? So, I recommend that he accept the policy that the city gives and we'll sign him up there.
Kamarie, I'd second say.
I was just going to say what he just said. The only person who's getting insurance is him.
I understand there is one employee that chose to go to a different plan and pays for it themselves. And if that's the case, then by all means pay for it yourself, but not out of the city funds.
Right.
So, you know, if Officer, you know, Officer Beckett wants to do this, or the rest, I still think that paying the whole thing, you know, for each employee is a little bit much. If I'm in the other world, they would not have, I mean, they would not have, you know, you have to pay something on your end. Most companies, and they're in a profit, we're not, this is not, this is a city, this is not a profit business. And so I think that, you know, personally, I'd like to see a change to where a portion of it is paid by the employee as well, to save money. This is taxpayers' money, you know, it's not just free stuff coming in. And it's not something that we can go out and sell a product and bring profit in so that we can give bonuses, so that we can give things out. Now, get kind of back on the bonus thing, I don't mind a $25 gift card, but I don't think a whole, what, $25, whatever that is, that's maybe a chance to say that, but I think that they just, we just need to, those are little places that we can save the taxpayers' money, we can save the city money. So that's kind of what I see. So how do we go about just having Officer Beckett decide?
What I'm going to have to...
Do you want to make a motion?
Okay. I can get him on our insurance even though it's past the, like, enrollment deadline because there would be, this would be considered a change. He's exempted right now currently because he has his own insurance. I have to prove that to them to get him to exemption. If he no longer has his own insurance, then that would quantify a change. He could get it, you know, at any time during the year. Like, I got my insurance when it was past the deadline as well because it was a change. Another idea, that if he insists on keeping, you know, an Blue Cross Blue Shield, you know, perhaps because of the provider, the doctors, then instead of forcing him onto our policy, we, you know, we just suggested that we, he could keep his, but we will pay only the equivalent of what we would have paid if he was on our insurance, which is $422.32. And he would have to make up for it. Correct. That was just a suggestion I made.
No, that's fine, that's fine. And another suggestion too is that, do all of our city employees have their spouses included on their plans? Okay, I think that needs to be looked into also, that, you know, this is, that, not to have his spouse included on that.
That is what we just said.
Yeah, we just talked about that.
Oh, did I miss that part? Oh, excuse me, thank you, all right. You guys have all decided that you're not going to pay the city increase, correct?
Okay, so I need a motion. Well, if he, if he chooses to go on the city insurance, she wouldn't be covered. If he chooses to do this, then he's going to have to pay the difference, correct?
As far as the employee wife, correct. If he, if he is on our insurance, we would just pay the $422. But if he insists on getting his wife, it would actually be higher than this $800 for employee and spouse under the city. It was already solidated, it's over $1,000. So that would, you know, but it obviously would, and I wouldn't, he'll pay for it.
No, you're fine, because you know more about it than I do.
He just paid the difference.
Right.
He would have to pay whatever difference.
Over $400 something dollars. Right, he's got to pay.
He's got to pay the rest of it.
Okay.
He would have to pay $400, whatever would have to come out of his pocket. He has to pay the $800.
How is that going to affect the other employee that we have that pays their own insurance because they chose not to be on the plan and didn't pay their own?
Everybody's on the same plan.
Well, if you say, what if they decide to get a plan of their own?
The collector's on her own plan.
Then we would have to be saying...
She's not an employee.
She's an elected official.
Okay, thank you, all right.
Okay, so, somebody needs to make a motion?
Okay, I make a motion that we, at work, he to go on our insurance. And the second part of that motion is, is if he doesn't want to go on our insurance and he requires to obtain, keep his insurance, then we pay what we pay for the other employees and he has to pay the difference. That's our motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, departmental insurance, or departmental reports. We got any questions in the board? Emergency management report.
Yeah, I went to an emergency response exercise on December 4th. It was a tabletop exercise with Missouri Homeland Security. The scenario was a small hawks outbreak and we, there was 15 different stadiums we had to go through as the scenario advanced. The diagram of the city ordinance is on, you know, emergency ordinance. There is a state statute, there is a county ordinance and city ordinance that gives legal your legal right to quarantine someone. However, they brought up, if we quarantined somebody, we basically become their legal caretaker and have to pay their lost wages for food and so. That issue came up, what's the medical way came up, and really, I agree with you in the things that, you know, we need to deal with in emergency. And also I had meetings on December 9th with the state emergency management and Homeland Security and we discussed our, our county is joining another region in the funding and it's a mess. It was very supportive as well. That's what you made back.
Okay. Water and sewer report, Dennis?
Okay, that is good, chlorine residuals are good. We had a visit from Missouri Rural Water on 18th and November 2014 at the request of Alderman Smith. Guy come out and found another leak. We repaired the one leak, but there is another leak up there and we have to get to it. It was my recommendation that we wait until the weather warms up a little bit, above freezing anyway, because if we have to expose that pipe and leave it open, then it could freeze up and...
Is it a bad leak or is it a...
No, it's not a real bad leak, it's a service line to a residence, okay? We've been checking the chlorine residuals there and pressure to make sure that it stays above what it's supposed to. And so far, it's been doing pretty good. But we do, I do have plans on working on it next week. I've got it all marked up there and we're ready to roll on it next week when it starts warming up, before it gets cold again, I hope. And I've already talked to Ron Larsen, who just chops off in case we have to cut the streets. We won't have to blow them out.
Okay.
So, on that, okay. Service calls. We had six service calls on Grinders Antique Mall, Mr. Literus on Third Street, Mike on School Street, Teddy Lynch and the Brewers on Seventh Street. Got a report back from DNR on lead and copper results and disinfection byproduct. All was well below the maximum contaminant level. And the persons that are involved that provided the samples were given a copy. So, that's basically my report.
I was checking on that because of that water leak up there and I'm sure they didn't have time to do that yet, but I went up today and got a printout. When they read the meter on 12-8, and there was a five-day difference between last month, they said they read it on 11-3 and 12-8. But the difference between the months is 528,920 gallons. We use 955, 200 the previous month, that was what was billed, 1,484,128 this month. And that's, that's a big loss. That's all going on up there, that's a big, that's a big leak. And there's also a difference of just under $2,500 in the bill we have to pay back to them from last month to this month. 69.75 is what was billed for this month, then the last month it was holding for them. So, that's something that we need to... We do need to take care of that.
It's not, that's not the only thing that's going on. She doesn't know it, but that's okay, she can report what she thinks, okay?
Well, I can report it in my business book.
Diane, you don't understand. I'm not going to argue with you. This is not the place. All right, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, market centers are in port.
Parking centers are fine, I mean, you know, we do have a problem with people going in there making donuts in the ground up there. So, I don't know if we should, there's that gate, yeah. I don't know if we should close that gate or leave it open still and just increase patrols in that area or what, if there's people going up there making donuts in the grass up there.
Tearing up the grass?
Yeah.
So, maybe we do need to think about closing it.
Actually, it's, you know, it really would hurt. I mean, December is going to be out of having orders and port.
Right.
It's still spring anyway. Just go ahead and mop it up. And if for some reason we get a beautiful day and somebody wants to use it, they can contact us because we can all get your help for it. We're looking at it, we have, as it is, we're prepared.
Laurie, did you want to say something?
Just what he did.
Okay.
So, yeah, I would suggest that maybe we go ahead and close it up.
Well, we, we got, we got a mortgage says that that park is open all year round, okay? So, do I need to have a motion or anything? Or is this just a policy change?
Not really, it's open, it's just a...
Because if somebody wanted to go down there, they can contact the city.
It's still open.
Right.
But we don't have to know the order, so I'm going to go out and stay.
Okay, it was just a question that I had.
That's what I would, I would think, yeah, it was a good question.
Yeah, that's fine, it was a good point.
Because it would still be considered open, you would just need to contact somebody and let them know that you wanted to go down now.
Exactly, okay.
Okay, street department.
Yeah. We got a little son of a bitch. Bob's down here, but we got some more street signs and we're pushing more of them up trying to get them all. I'm shocked that I didn't get it passed.
Going out.
I drive around now and I'm like, wow, I didn't know I hadn't done that over. But I'm glad it got their attention. David's working on a grant, we're trying to get a demolition saw. That's what I call it, because that's like pavement and stuff. Every time we get him on, we gotta go to, what, a fording or somewhere out in there, rent it, cost a couple hundred dollars the time we rent it. But if we can get this grant, around $15,000, what we're trying for, to buy it from, have our own. We go to the rental and all of the time going there, time coming back, it's sure, you know, what you use on the blade, it's sort of have our own equipment that we have to build around.
And then it's part of the purpose of it, but they're going to have to be doing it on several, for cutting here.
Actually, we don't have nothing to do that with. But if we can get this grant to give us, it'll be a good...
It's great of this.
I know, go ahead.
Okay. Fire department.
Okay, has got anything to report, Jessica?
Well, we had one mutually fire tall and we lost one firefighter because he's moved after the first of the year. And we entered for the conservation grant, got the Christmas ones put up. Also, we got a call from single tank and they said they had some old fire department or fire truck equipment that they were going to be more or less giving out to the fire department. So, we went down there and picked up some stuff. We got two 24-foot sections of suction hose that we can use on tanker. And that, it's going to be a heck of a lot lighter than what we got on the truck. And so we got that stuff, we're going to try to implement that. And then also we're going to have a Santa Claus is going to be coming to the city hall on 21st. And I'm planning on being there from 1:00 to 3:00. And then also we got a class for traffic safety for emergency responders on December 15th and 16th at St. John Firehouse.
Do you need donations or anything like that for Santa Claus like that?
I'm going to hear from David. Yeah. Actually, we're taking it up for ourselves, actually do the Santa Claus.
What are you guys doing?
Going over and buying toys, they're still small toys, like dollar toys, like the Dodger. Or actually, I talked to the guy today, I got to go out and talk to him tonight. And he said he might work with us to donate to us, but I talked to his manager, the big head manager. And anyways, I'm going to turn around and, but if not, we're just going to take it out of our, actually buy it. You know, that's really what we were looking for, is like kids from like year old, like 12, the ones that actually get involved in that kind of things. But anyways, I'm, that's actually it.
Well, I seen on here that you're going to be taking pictures, who's going to be giving them?
Actually, we're going to talk to Clint, see if he did. If not, we're going to talk to another woman that I know, that she's got an actual primitive stuff she's taking. Like, it's actually a professional deal thing. And she said that she'd do it for nothing, so.
Oh, well, that's awesome.
She knows what it's about, what it's for. She said, you know, we'll work together on things, so that's before time to be a gentleman.
Okay, I think you want to do, or they're, or they're, he's right, like he said, Brooklyners with toys and clothing. What's, what's the date of the deal? The 20th of December from 1:00 to 3:00.
Okay. Fire department, or police department.
I had that right at the spread of time, what we discussed about it, that nothing else affects me. So, it's going, that mark that pays outside also certainly hasn't...
Okay, he doesn't have to say. Arrow control.
No dog, we have to all admit that now.
Okay, citizens' participation for public discussions. Does anybody have anything to say? Okay.
Good evening, I'm Logan Prince of Democratic Club and Chief of Central Committee. Like I've spoken with your mayor, we're extending an invitation and David will get the email sometime tonight, inviting you to a Christmas party on the 18th of December at 5:30 at the Old Eagles in St. David. This is right along the line of Boonsdale and St. David have already extended that invitation and we'll make sure that you guys get it as well. And, and then, I gave, you said it hurt 23 concerns. And I'm glad the newspaper's not here because like I spoke with your mayor, I want to sit down and talk with the board and see what you guys think. What you can fix, what you can't fix. It will be beneficial for all of us. And then, I didn't share this with your mayor, I want to be with you, members of the board and businessmen in town to see the other side of the picture, so we can work on it. Because we all here together, we all live in this town, we should all be working for it. And the bottom line is, we need to work toward the development of the city and not try to hold out a security line there. Because all we do is sell newspapers and we just want to get things running. Did we have anything down on the rear chair, because she probably yet, I talked with the county. Did we have anything involved? I think I talked with Dennis, he told me, I checked with the county, we have to go which is since the pipes come in, right?
There are, yeah.
You know what? So, we got is the weather, right? But she needs to know, she has a contract standing back to do the work. But the dirt from the excavation on the county can be used, they all score without that happening. So, thanks for your assistance and I look forward to talking with you.
Okay, does anybody else have anything else?
A quick thank you. I'll hold them from up there on the one. I've lived here over 18 years, my house 18 years. It's the first time I've seen Elm Street and Fifth Street sign up there and I thank you. I mean, it doesn't seem like much, but, you know, that helps people find a way around and it's nice to see that, so I'm glad that's, that's been taken care of.
Like I said, I followed that, I did not realize, we lived here, if you go up and down, you know, the street signs, I would go to herbalism, I'm also a little happy. I'm glad somebody brought it to our attention, we'll get it, we'll take care of it, it'll be good.
Okay, anything else?
On that park thing, I noticed that we're not utilizing the park to the, to the best of its... We can talk to the people that have ball games. We used to have ball games there. They ran out of space, they don't have enough space to play ball. We, we should be talking with them and see if they can, I'm sure people will come back down. We have an excellent ball.
So, last time, when I was on...
That's something to consider.
Well, I struck out on that, man, that's been almost 15, 16 years.
I have a question, I, when I read that there was a letter sent to the county on conditions, but it was about something different, their couple on Circle Drive. Have they received the letter yet from us specifically saying that they, that it will work with them?
I'm sure it's not yet. Okay. But we did talk to them.
They, they sent us the letter, saying that they're on board and how we have to do is request it.
You have, but you have to send that letter request.
We have an open agreement, we have to just decide on a date.
When, yeah.
Get everything coordinated.
Get everything coordinated.
They, they misunderstood my reasoning for when it was in the paper that they, because it was a message that was given. And I had told, I just wanted to let them know last month that we had voted to have the law come through the works, but it got turned into something different in the paper. So, yeah, they said that I was questioning when they, when it started and that's not that. That, because I understand they still are waiting for a letter from the city council. Yes. So if we can do that, get that all out of the way.
If, if, I mean, I assume I could speak with presenting commissioner Gary Nelson. Take a date that works for them, works for us, works for Rishir and her contractor. But, I mean, if they need a formal written letter, I can crank one out in the first.
I think that would probably cut all bases if you did that. And then they couldn't, I can say, well, you know, it's, I saw a guy thinking from the city. And that's what they kept telling me. You have to have something in writing from the city. So.
If, if they do the writing, you can do the writing. Only request they've made to me is that if the request comes from the mayor, uh, my house is over the streets or me myself is, for, for, for. I'm not talking right now.
Very young.
I'm very good friends with, uh, the presenting commissioner, Gary Nelson. And we have discussed this not only at county commission meetings, but at Southeast Planning Commission meetings down there. And he's agreed. And we want to coordinate everything all at once, like, like we've been saying all along. We're waiting on Gene Williams. We're waiting on, because we're ready. We got the materials. We're ready to go. But until all that's coordinated, so that way you're coming back three or four different times to try to do one, one project, it's, it's ridiculous. So, uh.
Well, we will just send them a letter stating that we're on board with this and we need to coordinate it so that we have the, they have the written request from us, okay?
That's fine. I don't have a problem with that. Write the letters, but it's an open letter. Not a specific date. Say, then we do.
Yes.
Agreement.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody else have anything? Okay, I need a motion. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?